I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, October 1st. Would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'm, we'll just go straight into the roll call. As we all know, there's a debate this evening, and some of us would like to watch that. Of course, we want to take care of city business, but the debate should be interesting.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Ponce?
Here.
Councilmember Shiglin?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here.
Then Mayor Pro Tem Lavelle will not be in attendance tonight.
Thank you. Are there any announcements or written communications?
I have some announcements.
Okay.
LA County will begin mailing ballots for the November election on October 7th. Please remember, you can turn in your ballot via USPS at any vote center in LA County, any drop box in LA County. There is a drop box located outside Avalon Library, which will open on October 8th. October 21st is the last day to register to vote, and for more election information, you can find that on www.lavote.gov. Written communication, city staff received one written communication regarding Item 5, Discussion Regarding Tents on the Beach, and one written communication on Item 6, Sidewalk Fending. Both documents have been provided to City Council and are filed in the City Clerk's Office.
Excellent. Department head reports?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members and city staff. Jackie Cordero, Public Works Director. During this fall season, we are focusing on preventative maintenance and backlog projects. The crew has been doing extensive work at JMF, mainly clearing the surrounding area, clearing the planters, and the hillside adjacent to the parking lot. In fact, we're working with the conservancies nursery to help us put a plant pallet together, a native plant pallet together. We're really trying to be good neighbors in that area because it's up the canyon, so anything that we plant, we want to make sure it doesn't spread and it's not invasive. The crew is also doing some trimming and brushing around here at City Hall, and last week, they helped remove six golf carts and four scooters from the island. A few upcoming projects for this fall season that I'm pretty excited about, Perk Niche Wall at the cemetery, that's very exciting. We are also having several upcoming services in this month. Renovation, we're going to be continuing our renovation of the Green Pier restroom, and installation of fiberglass doors at the pier behind Eric's, and the restroom is there too. And of course, the crew will continue with the City Hall improvements, installing doors and doing those finishing touches over here on the public works and planning side. We will still continue doing road striping markings around town, stop signs, curbs. One in particular that we're going to tackle, starting Monday, October 7th, would be the Lower Terrace Red curb painting, and I wanted to go ahead and put it up here. How do I do that? Do I just? Oh, there it goes. Here's the example. We posted this on social media, and we will be putting alerts posting on the road coming up. And again, as we had discussed in previous council meetings, this is really to help the fire departments respond to emergencies in that area, since it is very, very narrow. This is the type of notice that we put on social media. It's a little on the small side, but just giving you an idea of what to expect there. Thank you, Matt.
I see them all working, see them all working so well together and doing so many diverse projects. And then those water filler stations.
I know, we, those are done.
There's like 10 of those or something crazy, good number, and it's just, it's just amazing. Yeah.
The crew really is great. They're a great group of guys, and I really love seeing them early in the morning when they're, you know, out there sweeping, or it's my time to connect with them because it's so quiet and no one's around, and it's really nice.
Yeah.
But they're really hard workers.
You've got a great crew.
Yeah. I'm really grateful for that team.
Yeah, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jackie, I just have one quick question, and I don't want to like spotlight you or throw you under the bus or anything. Just curious though, who, are we, is the city responsible for maintaining that road that's, that goes like behind the Canyon Hotel, you know, and then goes all along behind, you can see Tremont Hall and all that stuff, you know, and it connects to like East Whitley or whatever? Are we responsible for that?
Is that behind Tremont Hall, the Country Club Road?
On the, yes, on the radar.
Yes, yes, right behind there, yeah.
There's some gigantic potholes up there.
Yeah, I know. We're going to try to tackle.
It's on your radar?
Yeah. I mean, there's potholes all over town, and I think, I mean, as we all know, this, Bob would probably know, I think seven or eight years ago was the last time there was a overlay.
Right.
And it is an extensive amount of work for us to go out there to, physically, someone has to walk and measure every single pothole, then you, you ground truth it with dig alert, and then, you know, you put a spreadsheet together and put all that document, because then you have to then turn that into, into a scope of work. So it's, it's on our list of many things, yeah.
Okay. I just wasn't sure, because I know you guys are super busy and super spread out all over the place, and, you know, hardly anybody, you know, really travel that road a lot. I just started doing it recently because of the Spanish classes or something, but I was just like, oh my gosh.
Yeah, there's a couple of pretty bad ones, but thank you for letting me know. I'll put that on our list, especially if there's some really bad ones that, we address those pretty, because we have to.
All right, cool. Thanks.
No, thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, City Staff, Mike Willegrino, Fire Chief. I think part of Country Club Road is Island Company. We don't have the whole thing, so it's a part of its Island Company as well.
That's what I, I.
Pretty sure, I know, they keep going, the Canyon Club's Island Company, and I think it does go around. September calls, 84 total calls for service, 26 fire-related, and 59 medical runs. We're also adding on Lower Terrace and Beacon, the bridge right there, that's one other spot we're going to paint red. It is already red, it just needs to be repainted and enforced, and there's about five feet that needs to be added to it, because we can't, nothing can make that turn, so that'll be added. It was an honor to be on the field at Dodger Stadium with 18 of my other chiefs that made it. It was fun, fun family day, all the chiefs and the family together, and sitting in the hot sun, it was. And then, just don't forget, you guys won't be here, but Avalon Fire, City Fire is holding, hosting the Chamber Mixer on Thursday.
Yeah.
That's it. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. In case you, it's not painfully obvious, Orin's not here tonight, he's off enjoying some time off, so you got me instead, so.
Great.
September's been a real busy month for us, in a lot of different ways, so just run down a couple of things, and that we're working on in the next couple of weeks. First off, start off with the happy news. According to our research department, looks like September mooring fees are up about 20% from last one.
Wow.
I know, that same look I had on my face when I heard too. And that's corrected for the mooring fee increases and everything, so we'll see how that pans out, but that was some very happy news I heard today. Some of the reasons for that, we've had a bunch of yacht clubs over, Bahia Corinthian, Mackel Flat, we've had fishing tournaments, the Outrigger Race, we had the Ben Carlson, we just had the War Heroes on Water Fishing Tournament, which is a really cool event, benefiting veterans and all that. We had a Catalina Fun Run, which is a powerboat race that just came to the harbor this past weekend, about 50 boats there. We also had a Catalina kayak cleanup, which Orin was, actually had a big part in, helping clean up Tin Can Beach down there by the dump, so that went off really well, and they took, they took probably about 1,000 pounds of stuff off that beach, so very helpful for cleaning up the coastline. Going forward, we still have work, continues on the South Beach Restoration Project, also the Club Dinghy Dock Replacement Project. Those are both heading off to permitting, so, you know, fingers crossed, we'll sail through there and keep up our timeline on that one. Barbara Pearson Dinghy Dock, tomorrow the ramp's coming out, so we'll continue on that. We're improving that one, a new ramp, a new lifting mechanism. We have the Harbor Roof Project, which starts on the 14th, so you'll see a bunch of construction going on out at the end of the pier there, so we're real happy about that one getting going. We also have part-time hiring for patrol officers, that is ongoing. Right now, the, it's opening, it's open right now for applications, and closes on the 11th, so if you know anybody that would like to work on the water out there, we'd love to have them out there. What else do we have? Oh, we have one, I want to give a thank you out to Captain King and his office. We had a report of a stolen boat last week, and anyway, we worked with them, actually assisted them, they did most of the hard work on getting all the i's dotted and the t's crossed, and were able to take in a stolen boat and get it back to Alamanas Marina, so thank you, Captain King, and your office for helping us out with that one, or we helped you out, really. So back to the stats, for September, we had 2010 boats arriving, we had 6,777 total mooring nights.
Wow. That's a big number, yeah.
I like that number.
I've never heard the 6,000 before. Wow.
So, yeah, it was a busy month, you know, it was probably because it's so hot out, you know, everywhere else, and beautiful weather here, the boating conditions were awesome, so. I'm sure, breaking it down for you, we had five baby watch assists, a couple citations, 16 emergency calls, 10 of which were medical, we had 65 enforcement calls, two of which were discharges, 114 public assist calls, almost 300 security patrols, and last but not least, two Coast Guard assists. So, there you go.
Any questions?
And a partridge in a pear tree. Thank you.
Good job, good job.
Yeah, thanks. And I just want to say, while Captain King is walking up here, I had comments from the community, said that they'd hear much better the last council meeting, so thank you. And Jamie said there, there's even, they did some split things, so it should even be better heard on Channel 3, so thank you, crew, for all of that work. I'm sorry, go ahead, Matt.
Good evening, County Council. I'm sorry.
Council.
County Council. That's my last job, is dealing with all the attorneys and the Sheriff's Department. Matthew K, Sheriff's Captain on the island. Since our last meeting, we had 86 observations made by the deputies, we had 63 calls for service, we did nine traffic stops, and we made five arrests, two for drunk and public, one for battery, and one for vandalism. Currently, we're working with Maverick Helicopters again this year, and we're trying to plan out for the toy giveaway again, and have Santa fly over, so we're starting fairly early this year for once, and hopefully, with the help of the community, and the Sheriff's Department, and Maverick, we'll get plenty of toys again. It's a fantastic event, so if you're out there listening, you know, we'll give you dates later on, and hopefully enough kids to pick up all the toys. We're also working right now, Dave Hart and I are working, trying to get an Explorer program together. I know I mentioned it last week, but it's something that I really want to be successful. It's a big deal to us. It'll be the first year in many, many years it's been on the island, and the goal is to get, hopefully, at least 10 kids between the age of 10, or 14 and 18. It can go up to 20, but typically, starting the program, really want it, need to be, you know, the high school age typically. It's a fantastic program, so if you're out there listening and you have anybody in mind, feel free to contact the Sheriff's Department and contact me, and we want to get as big a list together as we can. We're going to be recruiting with the school, having meetings, doing career days, having explorers come over from over town, and hopefully, we'll get a good program here. I think if we have a good foundation, then we can, year after year after year, you know, and we could start having actual explorers from the island as what's called drill instructors for island kids, and keep going on, and then someday, I'll come back in 30 years, and I'll be a former explorer running the station, hopefully. That's the big goal. But, you know, we'll see what happens. That's about all I have this week. Any questions?
Questions?
No, but I just wanted to thank you for having a conversation with me today, that was great.
Anytime. Please feel free to call anybody. Call me anytime. Thank you.
Uh huh.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Matt Baker, Finance Director. Have some early reporting for August numbers. Again, those weren't due until yesterday, September 30th, so Finance is still compiling the numbers, but of the hotels that, that paid early, they were up 21%, but again, if we have to go back in history and remember, last August, we had the tropical storm hurricane event, and so that definitely, it's a positive, but that's really what was driving that level of increase. Cross channel was up 14%, again, that was impacted by the storm, but if you compare to July of 2022, down 1 and 1/2%. So down 1 and 1/2% from July of '22, but that was a high for, record high for August. And then lastly, I have auditors onsite next week, so if you see any new faces in Finance, that's probably who they are, so unless there's any questions.
Thank you. Good news.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. David Hart, Community Service. This past week, we had the Catalina Film Festival. It was brought back here to Avalon, the entire event. Over the last couple of years, they split it between Long Beach and Avalon, and they've decided to continue just to have it full-time now, here on Catalina Island. With shows running at the Community Church, City Council Chamber, and Avalon Theater, the festival, which is one of the top 50 film festivals in the world, brought over 100 of the 200 up-and-coming filmmakers to the island. They also had a Catalina showcase for one of Avalon's very own, Alex Moran, whose films, Tomorrow You Pretty Go, showed here at the Council Chamber. One of the leads was also our very own Everado Bariga, whose role in this film got him an agent, and is now working on his own show. This shows that it doesn't matter where you come from, if you're willing to work hard, your dreams can, can come true. We will also be showcasing Alex's film after he goes through some negotiation with some streaming companies, which he's doing right now, but once those negotiations are done, he will be bringing the film to put into the Avalon Theater for the local community. Speaking of festivals, the Jazz Tracks is coming next weekend, the 11th through the 13th, and the 18th through the 20th. The event will be in the Casino Ballroom, the artist Richard, with artist Richard Elliott, Rick Braun, The Spinners, and many more big smooth jazz artists to come. They hope that you come enjoy this legacy event that's been over 30 years here. You can purchase tickets online at jazztracks.com. The Fall Carnival will be October 18th. Come join us in the fun with local game, food, and informational booths. This year, we've doubled up on the fire dancers, so it should be quite exciting. We will close the rental of the booths by October 15th, so if you do want to get a booth in this year's event, please contact us at the Community Service Department by October 15th. And now, a little presentation.
He said it was little.
Oh, yeah. Wait for that. Okay. So the Avalon Community Skate Park, we've been having some dilemmas over the last couple of years, and we've had a few things that have kind of come up that's made us think about maybe making a switch here. Some of the things that, one of the big stuff is the damage to the current park. You'll see some of these items, every item we have in there, every piece of equipment has some sort of damage, whether it be water damage, damage from bikes and e-bikes jumping on them and running down them. Real spongy, the undersides, it's, it's a liability. Screws sticking out, even when we screw them back in, they, because of the impact of the bikes and stuff, screws are popping out. Currently, it's going to cost over $15,000 to replace some of these equipment. We just spent $15,000 last year on some of these equipment, and is, you know, as you can see, the damage is pretty extensive. So we, what we're thinking is, we want to change the skate park to a multi-use facility. The current skate park, again, maintenance, the cost of maintenance, graffiti, continual damage of equipment, broken bottles, the man-hours it takes for the maintenance, it's become a place of delinquent behavior at night, from drinking to smoking, graffiti, et cetera. And currently, we're, we've lost gym time at the school, because the school, which is great, has started their middle school programs, which are going phenomenal, but because of that, we no longer have space and time, the gym is too impacted, so we need another space for that. And also, we will probably be losing the skate park, according to Island Company, within a year, year and a half, due to them starting their build-out, and part of their build-out would be taking over the skate park as it is. So what we want to do in the meantime is kind of have a stopgap in a multi-use facility. One, it's lower maintenance, it's a better investment for the limited time that we have, that we have it for. It would provide space to conduct multi-use programming for youth and adults, practice spaces for, for youth soccer, or youth basketball programs, as well as for the adults, as you'll see when I say eases congestion at Joe Machado Field. We have a lot of adult programs, of like footsleek programs that go on up there, that are going on at the same time we have soccer programs up there, same time school has soccer programs or football programs out there, so if we can pull one of those off to ease the congestion up there, it would be incredibly helpful as well. And we believe that we'll have a lot more public activity out there, with open, like open footsleek, open basketball, archery. So one of the things that we're looking at is the community court schematics, which is the, area is 150 feet by 70 feet, 10,500 square feet. We're looking at putting a basketball court with adjustable height rims in there, a footsleek court, if you don't know what footsleek is, it's a fast-paced soccer game with no goalies, done on much smaller space. And an archery range with a potential handball wall in there as well. We'd also have a picnic area at the entrance, lighting, eight solar posts, and seating in between courts to view it, so this is kind of what, a rough draft of what it would look like, once we painted it out, we put the courts in there, and, and the seating and the lights. And to do, to do this, the costs, at the high end, this is at the high end, I estimated way up, because you always, things always seem to cost more than what people say they are, so I estimate it high up. So the high end would be $17,500 to do a multi-use facility like this, and, and as you all know, we've, we've been programming, like Tremont Hall, we've got that so programmed out, and we have so much programming, programming already. We've had, we have already archery equipment, but we just have no place to do it or put it. This will give us an opportunity to start that program as well, and each of the courts, you could even, we could mine it out for pickleball, we can do many other type of facilities that we currently cannot give our community, and with the more adults that we have up there participating as well, less likely of delinquency happening up there. So that is our goal, right now with that.
And you have the money.
What's that?
And you have the money.
We'll figure it out.
Okay. I do have to ask the.
We could either spend $15,000 on, you know, on that equipment, right? Or we can do this, right? And like I said, we spent $15,000 last year, and, and the stuff is already, you know, demolished. And if we, and if we were to put that money back towards the skate, the skate pieces, one that's given up, we have nowhere to even store that stuff.
Exactly.
Yeah, so we believe this would be a better use of the space.
It seems, seems well thought out, to me. What about for those limited number of skateboarders we have, have, has there been a discussion?
No.
Okay.
No. We, we haven't even really heard from the community at all, the skate community at all, about the, I mean, the conditions are not good.
I know.
And we're going out looking at it while trying to maintain it, and we're noticing it, but we're not even getting any feedback from community about the condition of the park. And, and we're, we're just doing this because we notice it, and we just believe that it can be better utilized, and will, and will be utilized.
It will.
As a multi-use facility.
Excellent.
And where are you planning on putting this?
Our skate park is?
The skate park.
In the skate park.
Oh, I thought it said you were losing the land to Island Company Housing.
We're going to, we're going to lose the space in about a year and a half to Island Company Housing, so we're going, do we, we could either have an empty space, because, or we can actually make something of this, because we would have to pull all this, all the skate equipment, all the skate equipment in there, because it's so damaged and such a liability yet, right now. So we could either spend $15,000 to put that equipment back out, or we can spend this to, to utilize the space in a great.
So this is going to be temporary, is that what you're saying?
Yes, both, either way, both of them are temporary. So what would be the best way to utilize the space?
We should be able to reuse the basketball goals, though.
Yeah, we can take that.
If we're coming out of the Island Company project, we'll have space somewhere for park space, and the hope would be that we'd be able to utilize, reutilize the basketball, because we just don't think we're going to have this amount of space to be able to utilize for a skate park in the future.
I got you, but I do have a concern about losing the skate park, though, because, you know, the kids love it, and the ones that are, that do it, that are into it, I'm concerned that they would go looking for other railings to slide down and, you know, go around town and find other places to be jumping around with their, their bikes or their skateboards or whatever.
Which they currently do.
I kind of hate to see that go away, and if maybe, I don't know, on the side, you can put a rampers, I don't know, but, I mean, that's just, that's just a concern of mine, because I know over town, they've had to put objects on top of walls to prevent people from doing that, and there's another expense, and, you know, then there's limited things for kids to do here, so to take away one activity is sad. But I, I understand exactly what you're saying, and I understand exactly the need and the expense and all that kind of stuff, I just wish that there would be some way, and so.
And that's, and that's like one of, one of our hopes is, it's not, it's not a hope there, we will be getting space that, that goes along with the housing, because they have to give so much green space, and so with them taking away the skate park, there's an area that's, that will be green space, that we can utilize to create parks there, and just like the CM had spoken about, we can, we can put those, those baskets back up, but there might be a space that we could put like a little pocket skate park, and even besides, one of the big issues with this skate park is all the equipment's wood, right? Because we, because of the fact that it's a, we don't own the space, you can't really concrete it, right? Concrete space, but if we were to get, be able to get space, we would be able to make a pocket car, park where you can concrete the skate, the skate park, and then, and then, you know, like a little bowl, what, or whatnot, and that becomes easier maintenance, less damage, you know, and easier to maintain. So that's, that's, that's our hope and dream, to be able to make that, to make that happen.
So what you have drawn here would be open to the public, free, blah, 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 just like the courts.
Yes, we, yes, we would, we would still like have time when we put up there, when we would use it for some of our programming, but when it's not being used for program, it would be open space for what we call in sports, we'll open runs, so people come in, just get an open run, and pick up, pick up soft, footsleek, pick up, pick up basketball, archery range, if you have your own archery stuff, you can go in there and do that. We'll have a hard wall, so you could actually do like handball up against it, or.
And then my only other thing I'm looking at is, I know, I know that you said basketball and soccer, right? But, but what you have pictured here, and it's probably, maybe, I don't know, is it just clip art or something, but?
That, the picture, the picture there is just like what it could look like, type of what it could look like.
Yeah.
But this is what we're, we're proposing.
Okay, cool. And my only thing, if you ever do that, you know, it looked like a tennis court, make it a pickleball court, because it's like the fastest growing sport on the planet.
No, no, 100.
I've never played archery before, so I'm just mostly thinking of safety, like for the little ones, if they get in there, does it have to be adult supervision, how do we keep eyes on that?
We would, we would have times where we have somebody who's going to be teaching archery.
Okay, so the equipment wouldn't just be out for everyone, okay.
And just like many, like, like many parks, there's parks out there that just have open ranges, right? And it's something that families go do, right? Because they have their own, because we won't provide them with. And just like many, uh, um, like, like many parks, there's parks out there that just have open ranges, right? And it's something that families go do, right? Because they have their own, because we won't provide them with the bow and arrow, right?
That's what I was saying, I was like, that's sexy.
That's what, I mean, during classes, we would provide that, you know, and that's one of the things we want to do. I have all that equipment that was, that's been donated to me. And, but for, and you can tell, we're gonna have, that, that will be fenced off, so no strays, you know, would go through. Um, but if somebody's good with the bow, bow and arrow, they should be taking, you know, there's, usually it's a family, um, family event. Um, uh, it's a good question, right? What if, what if a family does it, and then the eight-year-old kid decides, I'm just gonna go shoot today? So that stuff we, we would have to think out a little bit on, but, yeah.
And axe throwing.
What's that?
Axe throwing.
Axe, oh, you want axe throwing?
Well, well, if somebody just got one, and it's kind of more of that, it sticks to the stuff, so that, so that would be kind of fun.
It's me indoor.
Well, in or outdoor, the one that, the one that Allison Osinski has is in or out. So, uh, okay. There, just, it'll be so multi-use, and somebody's gonna come up with another idea and go, oh, cool, throw that in there, too. I mean, just having that big open space would be, would be nice.
Hopefully down the road, it shows the impact of that, and maybe somewhere, someday, somebody's gonna give us some space so we can actually put a community center up, it would be, would be amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Jocelyn Francis, Assistant City Manager. Um, I have some super exciting news to share. On Monday, October 14th, our new IT manager will be starting with the city, um, so we're super excited to welcome, uh, Michael to the city. Um, I'll, uh, be introducing him to council and our community member at a, um, the following council meeting, or maybe sometime in November, to be determined. Um, and then, uh, this week, we'll be publishing the Building and Safety Division Services, RFP, that you all approved at the last council meeting. Um, some statistics for code enforcement for the month of September, very busy. Um, they issued, uh, over 280 citations. Um, they were able to remove 10 vehicles, uh, and ship them off the island last week. Um, they issued 40 red tag violations for various abandoned property, um, responded to 30 animal control calls for service, assisted with traffic control on 10 emergency calls for service, um, and, uh, took, uh, two, uh, runs up to the Pebbley Beach landfill for illegal dumping. So, um, and then for our vehicle clerk, um, interior residential vehicle season is upon us, um, due November 1st. So just a reminder for our interior residential permities, um, folks can go online to cityofavalon.com/vehicles to renew online. Um, we have a new, uh, system in place where you can search for your license plate number, pull up your records, um, and just update the information from there, pay online. Um, so this will be our first kind of, um, to fill that new system out with, uh, um, permits, so that's exciting. Um, and then, uh, again, um, just a reminder, the DMV will not be coming in October. Um, we're still working with Assembly Member Loenthal's office, um, and the DMV to certainly get them out here in April, if not before then. Um, and, uh, working on, looking at a kiosk, um, the kiosks are run by private businesses. Um, so if it's not, uh, um, you know, if there's no many money to be made or gained from having a kiosk here, it's hard to make that case, but we're still fighting, we're still fighting for it. Um, in the meantime, uh, the library, the Los Angeles County Library that we have here on the island, um, has a public computer, um, for folks, um, and they're willing to help people out if they want to go online, um, to conduct registration, um, business through the DMV portal. Um, we also, uh, have a city computer here in the lobby, available for public use. Um, it has a printer attached to it, we've got the DMV, um, website information bookmarked on that, we have DMV informational materials. Um, Rosio has been fantastic and is willing to help people out in any way that she can. Um, and, uh, the website for the DMV is DMV.ca.gov, and there's certainly a lot of business that can be done, uh, using that tool. Um, and that's all I have.
And how about our recycling thing? Where's that?
A reverse vending machine. Um, it's in progress, uh, we're working with CalRecycle on, um, going through the certification process to make it a recycling center. Um, and then I'm still, uh, hopeful, working with Vons, um, on a, uh, CRV program there. Um, uh, yeah, so it's in progress, yeah.
Thanks, good. And questions or comments? Okay, thank you. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good evening, a couple of things tonight, uh, just wanted to let everyone know. Today, uh, at 1:00, we had our kickoff meeting with, uh, public sector personnel consultants, our, um, compensation study consultant. We had, uh, the meeting was here in council chambers, all, each of the bargaining units had two members present, uh, to hear the, the presentation, uh, on the kickoff of the comp study, and, uh, Bob Longmire, who is our contact person there, explained how they're gonna go about the process, what criteria they're gonna use to, uh, select other cities to, to use as comparables for us, uh, answered any questions. CIU was, uh, here on behalf of, uh, the two bargaining units they represent on the island. It was a very positive meeting, I think they, uh, did a great job of explaining how they're gonna go about this process. They will then take this information, and then the next meeting we'll have is when they actually present and select the 10 to 15 cities that they're gonna use, uh, for this study. And we'll get back together with all the, uh, with the employee groups at that time. So we'll keep them involved and keep you involved as the process goes through. Our goal here is to have, uh, all this data and everything presented to both the city and the, and the unions, uh, sometime in January. Um, the reason we're waiting till then is to get the most accurate information, the 2025 information for both healthcare and, and possible wage increases, uh, for next year. So when we're, when we're dealing with this, because as I think Council knows, all, all of our employees bargaining units, MOUs are up, um, June 30th of next year, so next spring we'll be in negotiations with them, and, and this information will be, uh, critical to both, all sides, to make sure we're, we're treating our employees, uh, fairly and compared to, to other similarly situated cities, which are difficult to find for Avalon. But we'll do our best to find, find them. Uh, the, um, also just wanted to mention, our, our next council meeting is not gonna be two weeks from tonight, it's gonna be three weeks from tonight, on October 22nd, because all of Council, myself, and Jocelyn Francis will be over town, um, for CalCities, so, uh, three weeks from tonight. And likewise, we have rescheduled the Planning Commission meeting from October 16th to October 23rd, um, so I can be there. And at that meeting, uh, Bob, uh, is going to give a present CIP update to Planning Commission for the main, uh, CIP projects are heading our way, that being Five Corners, the Mole, um, and the Elbow Projects. We're gonna discuss that and answer any questions, both the public and Planning Commission would have at that meeting. So that'll be the 23rd. Um, also just wanted to mention, um, you know, Dave Hart mentioned, talked about the, uh, the Film Festival this weekend, uh, a couple of things, um, that he didn't mention is that Dave Hart was recognized as, uh, the heart of Avalon, and, uh, a well-deserved recognition, uh, for David. It reflects, obviously, it's who he is, but it reflects very well in the city that he, he represents the city and all of us. Um, I'd also like to mention, because he won't mention, is that the, the one film of the Avalon resident that was in this Film Festival and shown and, and received so much positive feedback would not have been in the Film Festival, it wasn't for Dave Hart pushing as hard as he did to get that in the Film Festival to begin with, so, um, thank you to David. And, let's see, finally, uh, Matt, if you could bring up, so, so Jamie talk, Jamie sends the weekly Public Works updates out every Friday, and there are always nice pictures of them working in a ditch and everything, but this is really what they do. That's Jeffrey, if you can see his legs.
Yeah.
That's Jeffrey trying to shut off a, uh, water valve that has blown over the weekend. Um, you know, he came in, we got him to come in, he came in on, uh, I think this was Sunday, Saturday or Sunday, he came in, and they own, you know, you don't have much option. You draw the short straw, and you go in there, and you just, you have to go to shut that thing off. So I just wanted to put this out there, because, you know, we recognize what these guys do, but this is, this is really not a pleasant job. Um, and when that water first came, it was a saltwater valve, but when it first burst, there was a lot of sediment in that pipe, and what was shooting up in the sky, uh, was, was basically brown-looking water, and people were a little panicked when that first happened. But it was saltwater, all right? I have a terrible saltwater, and, and I'm pretty sure that would not have been Jeffrey if it wasn't. Um, so just wanted to recognize him. Again, this is, this is truly what they do, and it's amazing when you see that photo of, of what they have to go through. So thanks, Jeffrey, and thanks, Public Works. Um, and that is it. Thank you.
Do we have a city attorney today?
Yes, you do. Um, stay tuned, for the next couple of months, we'll be having some various ordinances come to the city. The legislature has enacted, uh, many things dealing with housing and, uh, adult dwell, dwelling units that are required, and we have to amend our ordinances, so we'll be bringing a lot of those in November and December, so just be prepared for a lot of housing work that the legislature has demanded that we take action on.
Excellent, thank you. Okay. Council members.
I'll go first.
Okay.
Um, I did apply again for, uh, League of California Cities Policy Committees. Um, asked to be put on Community Services again, but also applied, because you have to pick three, um, for environmental quality and tax and rev. Tax and rev is scary. Um, but I did apply, see what happens. And then the other thing is, let's not forget Saturday, the Chili Cookoff and Cornhole Tournament, being held on by Rotary and the Avalon Lions Club. Uh, it will be at one, from 1:00 to 4:00, so come on out, and it's gonna be a lot of fun.
Do you have a letter of entrance?
Uh, right now, I believe we had 13 to 15 Chili's.
Okay, okay. Um, I'll go next. I don't have much, just still, um, ironing out a couple more details for the Resource Fair, which will be, uh, October 24th. At the moment, we have 19 agencies showing up from over town, um, so very, very excited for that, and so, um, I'm just hoping that not only can we build from the last Resource Fair to deliver what is needed, but, you know, keep hearing the community out on what else we could help with, and so, very proud of everyone helping on this project. We, I've already tried to get the word out, so the community is prepared to either try to take some time off, their lunchtime, or an hour or two to just pass by and take advantage of all these agencies that are coming over.
Can we put all that on the city website as well?
Uh, once I get all the details, then, yeah, because I know that we have, uh, like the medical center working on it, and us, and-
Yeah, good, good.
Um, just one more thing, just real quick, um, because I, it was kind of irritating. Um, people, um, were a little concerned the last few weeks with Edison's power going off, um, in that it was becoming a weekly thing. My, I, I posted on Facebook that, oh, right, the power's gone out again, you know, it's gonna be a weekly thing, sending up the flag, hoping that somebody from Edison would contact us. And the comment I made to that person was, you need to let the community know when these happen, because now you've got people in town harassing Edison employees because the power has gone off. Just post something that there was a reason, and there was a reason, there's an issue, they were trying to fix the issue, and every time they tried to turn the power on to do that fix, it would blow out the power, and this is the first time it blew out the power all over town. Um, but just explain it to the community that this is what's happening, and then people aren't getting angry at Edison employees, at Vons, or the post office. Just pop something out, just an announcement, this is, this is what's going on, folks. You know, this may happen, but i- it's just really frustrating. And, and personally, I was just a little upset, because that was the third time in two weeks that the power had gone out, so it just-
Right.
Well, I, I work for Edison, so thanks for that. I will, um, I, because I know out there, we don't have a social media person or something like that, but I'll talk to Jay, I mean, that's a good point, I'll talk to Jay and see if we can designate someone, or, you know, oh, well, that was probably Selena Luna's job.
Send the message to the city, the city can put it on the webpage.
But Selena's not here, so I guess when the power goes out, maybe I should contact Selena and say, hey, you know, put something out there or something, because, you know, they're also, with any corporate or, or public utility, you know, only certain people can say things in the media, you know, so it's, it's, but I'll mention it to Jay, and I'll see if we can, um, we can get something like that.
It saves a lot of heartache for employees that are coming in to lunch and-
Yeah, no, I got you, I'm one of those. My phone rings off the hook, it's like, I just answer it and go, nope, it's off everywhere. It's not just you, it's off everywhere.
Well, and she did, I, I think she reached out to all of us, and told us, I know, that's, I know, that's not enough.
But the point being that that's not our job, that's their job, yeah.
And, and what she was saying is, what you were explaining, is, what I was gonna add was, every time they tried to fix it, then it would go off. So now they were waiting for some experts to come in, bring in more of a crew to actually work with the project, so they weren't doing any more of that testing, so that we weren't having these glitches.
But it still goes down to, send that announcement, send that, send, it's, it's not up to us.
I know.
We wanna, we wanna tell the community what's going on, but it's not up to us to explain what's going on with Edison.
Exactly.
Okay.
Totally agree.
I'll send Jay an email right after this meeting. Oh, so me, okay. So I, um, attended, um, I read Cal Matters all the time, and they had a, um, a one-on-one with the Insurance Commissioner, um, Ricardo Lara, about the whole insurance debacle that's going on in the whole entire state, and it sounds like they're, they're making some inroads to some better things, because I did not realize that the fair plan was actually global. So it's like, that's why prices were so high, and it's supposed to be fair, but it's not. So Ricardo Lara is really working diligently to be able to extract California from that, and so then, then California can, can, um, set their own kind of things, and, and I believe he's talking about, you know, once he does that, then other states are jumping on board and thinking, yeah, this is a good idea, maybe the global thing was just, when it started a billion years ago, it was, it seemed okay, but now, I mean, with environmental change and, you know, all of that kind of stuff, there's, there's more wildfires all over the country than ever has been, ever. So I thought that that was good, and then also, um, he's working to, there's, there's, you know, big zones, big chunks that, that house a lot of communities, a lot of different communities, and, uh, people were saying, so if I go out of my way and spend a lot of money to mitigate, you know, clear the brush, put a metal roof or tile roof or something on my property, then why can't my taxes go down? And he said, because the way that the whole thing is structured, it's all one thing, so not one person would be able to do that. But so many people, uh, talked about that, which means that, um, people are taking it in their own hands, and they are being proactive, which is a really encouraging, really good thing to hear. So they're looking to change that as well, but also said that there's opportunity for people to get to know their neighbors and say, hey, you know, it's not a bad idea, we're, I'm protecting you, you're protecting me, we're protecting the next guy, on and on and on and on. So if there's, if there's nothing for fire to consume, then you're way better off. So I just wanted to share that it seems like that Ricardo Lara is doing a, a great job and working very diligently for the people of this state, and hopefully some changes. It's, you know, the way it works, it's, it's not gonna happen overnight, but hopefully it sounded like maybe within the next year and a half, two years. So be looking at that. Um, I'm gonna attend the Gateway Cities Cog tomorrow night for Lisa, kind of excited about that, never done that, so I'll tell you how that goes at our next meeting. Um, also, I wanted to mention, I, I went to the Film Festival, too, I love the Film Festival, I'm a, a movie junkie, and I watched a whole ton of them, and this was their 14th year, and next year is gonna be their 15th, so they said they're gonna pull out all the stops, I'm sure it's gonna be awesome. And Val, didn't you get an award for being volunteer of the, of the planet? So Val, Val, she volunteers for everything, but you've been there with the Film Festival from day one, so thank you very much for everything that you do. And that segues very well into my next point, which is, um, Avalon Community Theater is putting on another play, it's gonna be The Lion, The Witch, and The Wardrobe. So Sean is holding auditions, if anyone out there in here, um, desires to get on stage and, uh, be someone that you are not in real life, that's what acting is- real life, that's what acting is. It's like you get to be somebody else. So if you want to audition, that is Thursday, October 10th at 6:00 PM, Tremont Hall. Just prepare a one to two minute monologue. Just go online and borrow something from a play that you love. And then the performance dates will be December 13th through the 15th. So get that out there. And one last thing I, I want to say, and this is just kind of a personal thing. It's an election year and, and, you know, there's been a lot of divide in this country and a lot of, you know, people lose friends and all that kind of stuff. But last night, I spoke to a friend of mine in Tel Aviv. She's a really good friend of mine and she's lived there for the last 15 years. And, you know, just to hear her talk about what touches her life on a day-to-day basis and what, what happens, it's like, no matter how bad you think you got it here, we're golden. You know, just, just be blessed that we live where we live and, you know, we can make our own sound, solid choices. So everyone just be well.
That was nice. We got another award at the film festival for the city of Avalon. So we'll find it, we're amassing all of these things. I don't know, we're going to have to have a trophy room or something at some point. But anyway, this is absolutely lovely. The community church will not be doing the Christmas trees this year. So, and some of the other organizations weren't willing to pick it up. So you might have to fend for.
I saw that the Avalon Schools is taking it over.
They're going to for sure take it over? I knew, I heard that they might be looking into it. Okay. Because it's very, oh, good. Well, then more on that. Bonds has a shortage of pumpkins, so we will not be having the pumpkin patch at Fall Fest unless somebody can come through and steal a couple of, not steal, borrow a couple of big things from the mainland. Anyway, we're kind of working on it, but it's not looking good at this point. Okay. So now we're going to oral communication. So this is an opportunity for someone to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes and no action will be taken. And Gabby, do you have any?
I know.
Okay. Presentation. Jim?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For a little over a year now, my glasses. For a little over a year now, I've been bringing you a quarterly update on the tourism promotion efforts of Love Catalina Island. The reporting has been being put into a video format in order to speed up the delivery of a lot of information. Normally, we accompany these quarterly reports with a two-sided sheet of paper that provides you bullet points to match. However, for the quarter that we're presenting tonight, we did not do that because in July, the end, right after the end of the quarter, we did our annual report. So it's effectively already been communicated in writing as well. And that was sent to all of you and to all of our members. And so with that introduction, we'll play the video.
We're already summing up quarter two of 2024 for Catalina Island. Let's dive in and see how we performed from April through June. This quarter, we had 338,678 visitors cast away to Catalina Island, with hotel occupancy holding strong compared to Q2 of last year and showing an increase of 21% compared to last quarter. Our PR efforts were outstanding this quarter with 242 pieces of coverage, leading to a combined audience reach of 1.6 billion, 23% higher than Q2 of 2023, and almost 14,000% higher than Q1 of 2024. Our social media performance turned out great this quarter too, with another influx of followers on all major social media platforms, including the addition of Threads, where we've grown a community of nearly 8,000 from the ground up. Catalina's new Cast Away campaign continues to promote visitation and overnight stays with fresh creative coming to life in the form of social posts, video ads, and banner advertisements. Yeah, beautiful stuff. But our media metrics aren't that bad to look at either. Our programmatic and social campaigns generated over 10 million impressions this quarter, which is equal to 25% of the population of California. Our combined click-through rate on social and programmatic exceeded industry benchmarks yet again this quarter, with our social click-through rate exceeding the industry benchmark by over 130%. We sent out one Travel Zoo email in April and one Visit California email in May, both producing fantastic results, with the Visit California email reaching a 46% open rate and the Travel Zoo email exceeding industry benchmarks by over 62%. Our website metrics showcased a substantial increase over the last year and also improved compared to Q1. We received over 300,000 unique users, which is 30,000 more than Q1, and 45,000 more compared to the same period last year. Pride Month is always a big deal on the island, and this year was no exception. Our unique Pride ad campaign on Facebook had some stellar performance, as seen in our metrics, resulting in a great turnout this year for the Pride Walk, Dinghy Parade, and live performances. As a part of our new Cast Away campaign development, in collaboration with 62Above, we captured a new library of images that showcase vibrant island fun, drawing in the attention of travelers from far and wide every day. Our team's schedule was action-packed with events and travel to everywhere from Los Angeles to Galveston, Texas, allowing us to network and gain valuable information regarding the current state of our industry, and as always, giving us an advantage over most of our competitors. From local restaurant feasts to community service gatherings, to the energetic Pride Island celebration, Catalina Island was alive with vibrant events these past few months, bringing in visitors from all over. Walk-ins to our visitor center saw a dramatic increase of 53.8% from Q1 of 2023, along with more than a 16% increase in downloads of our visitor guides. And there you have it, the second quarter for Catalina Island, wrapped with some exciting results. We're ready to grab this third quarter by the buffalo horns, keeping our momentum going and building more success as we head on to the second half of 2024.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to share these significant achievements with you tonight. In summary, all of our numbers that we regularly measure were up. We had significant impressions throughout all of our PR and other media efforts. The Cast Away campaign that was mentioned near the end of the video has now been updated and currently includes offers to visitors, encouraging them to buy two nights and get the third night free in packages from our hotels and vacation rentals. And our fiscal year-end audit is very nearly completed and will be submitted to the city at the end of October. Therefore, I'll be back here in November to present that, in keeping with the, the requirements of an annual presentation. And some hot off the press August data, Matt stole a little bit of my thunder on this one, just recently in hand includes that total arrivals were up 14% for the month at over 152,491 visitors. And whenever we set a new record or a new milestone, I always like to look way back. And if you go in the wayback machine, in the mid 80s, there was one August where we did a little bit better than this. But at that time, we had boat service from Marina Del Rey that we do not currently have. So I, that's the only reason I can see why that August would have been even a little bit bigger. And so we'll be heading to FCCA, that's the Florida Caribbean Cruise Association, later this month, where we already have meetings confirmed with all of the corporations whose ships call on us or will be calling on us in 2025 and 2026, including a brand new brand that will be visiting here beginning in April of 2026, which is Virgin Cruises. And I know for many of our retailers, that's a welcome addition to the brand mix because it's a high-end cruiser and they'll have the discretionary income to support our economy. Finally, our annual marketing conference is being held October 17th, and we'll be hosting speakers from Visit California, CalTravel, Los Angeles Tourism, and Kind Traveler, along with our media contractors, our agency 62Above. Community members can join us by signing up at lovecatalina.com. And I'll just repeat what the chief said, that reminder also, we have a mixer that night at Avalon Fire Department. It's always one of our most fun mixers of the year. And we're sorry that you will not be there, Council.
I know we are too.
Any questions?
Questions? No, great. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Consent calendar?
Okay, thank you, Council. We have for the consent calendar, item number one, approved minutes from September 3rd, 2024, and September 17th, 2024, regular city council meeting. Item two, approved total expenditures for September 9th, 2024, through September 20th, 2024, totaling $2,229,063.67. Item three, adopt a resolution approving and adopting the amended conflict of interest code pursuant to Political Reform Act of 1974. And item four, city manager employment agreement merit increase.
Are there any comments? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve items one through four.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Call for the vote? Thanks.
You have to wake it up.
Four eyes, one absent, Mayor Pro Tem LaBelle.
Okay, item number five?
On general business, item number five, we have a discussion regarding tents on the beach. This was a item that was brought up at a council meeting a few meetings ago. And I'd like to add that in the summer of 2024, the city received a number of complaints regarding large camping tents and pop-up tents on the beaches along Crescent Avenue, specifically residents and visitors noted that tents restricted access to the beach, inhibited enjoyment of the view, and were erected for many consecutive days without continual use. When we looked at our existing code, we did recognize that while we have a, an code provision that prohibits tents on the beach, that states that it shall be unlawful, unlawful for any person to camp or to erect or maintain tents or other temporary shelters or occupy the same in any place within the city limits. The concern would, as we looked into this and using that specific code section to enforce it, brought into, brought into question, you know, how would an umbrella be viewed as other temporary shelter? Because not only do we have, it's quite common for umbrellas to be down there. The information, the feedback we're getting back isn't necessarily that the umbrellas are impeding the view and taking up too much space. It's those big, large setup tents that are often 10 by 10, and not only are that size, but have the, the ropes that come out to hold the poles and take another eight to 10 feet around the perimeter of those, of space. So that was the real big issue. And we started looking at other beach cities to see how they're dealing with it. And a number of them, as we put in the staff report, prohibit all tents on the beach, that being Los Angeles County, Newport Beach, Oceanside, Redondo Beach, Marina Del Rey, and Orange County. And others, and I won't get into the specifics, it's in the staff report, regulate them either by size, or you have to have two consec, two sides that are open for, to view through it, or square footage limit on the tents. And the other issue that we encounter down there is not only the tents on the beach and the size of those tents, but that they're left overnight, sometimes for days, sometimes for up to a week of people that'll come here, set their tent up when they first arrive, leave it there all week while they're, and walk back and forth from their, the unit that they're staying at. It becomes a problem. We haven't, we being Public Works and the city have not taken these items down. So what we've kind of thrown out there to council are the four options that we thought of, that being enforce existing ordinance as is. I wouldn't necessarily recommend that because we'd have to deal with umbrellas. Amend the existing ordinance, amend the existing ordinance to create, you know, size limitations or prohibit them, prohibit them on all beaches, prohibit them on Middle Beach and allow them in other areas. These are kind of, everything's at our disposal of how we'd like to regulate these. But I think when it was brought up by the mayor, I would confirm that the city has also received same and similar feedback of complaints regarding the size of these. We just don't have big and large enough beaches to handle the size of some of these things as it impacts other people wanting to use the beach. So we throw this out to, to council. This is our analysis of it. And we look to you guys for further direction on what you'd like to do to put in place before next season.
Anyone want to speak to this? Maybe speak, we'd have to speak about it. And you have, are you getting any feedback?
No, we no longer monitor.
They no longer do that. We don't.
Oh, that's.
But I'll start.
Okay.
I have no problem getting rid of the tents. I don't, our, our beaches are not that big, as you said. It's just silly that they bring them, pop them up and leave them up for a week.
The only thing about the tent size is what I find that people are doing now, some of them are, there's those baby tents. So they can, you know, but mom and dad can't fit in there. So they're maybe this tall, you know, and so they can throw their kid in there to sleep. And those I, I wouldn't be opposed to, but that would be a certain size.
What about pop-ups? Because they're like what they do with the art festival, because they're tall, so they don't impede. Is that bad too?
Yeah, because it still blocks.
It's what?
It still takes up space and blocks.
I don't, well, and I don't have, you know, these cities that do the two sides, well, first of all, you wouldn't want it to be the backside because that's going to block the view of anybody that's there. I don't have a problem with the whole open thing. I have a problem with the ones that have the extensions that go out this way as well. And also their stuff should, whatever size we decide, if we decide, their stuff has to fit within the parameters of that tent. It can't take up another 12, 14 feet because they bring in their wagons and their ice chests.
But now, but the thing is, you know, you're going to the beach. Why do you need a, I understand beach umbrellas because that's kind of the way going to the beach has always been. But why do you need a beach, why do you need the tent? I.
Well, we're not, okay, how about canopies? Okay, tents were kind of agreeing, but you don't really want the canopies.
Aren't they the same as the tent?
Those things that go like this, like they set up for, for Fall Fest. Those, those are pop-ups.
Those are pop-ups.
Yeah, yeah. So pop, what do we want to?
No, I just.
You say nothing?
Yeah.
But, you know, people without any tents or umbrellas or anything like that, you know, they put out a mess of towels and they take up just as much room without a tent being on top of them. So are we, are we in this discussion, are we thinking about regulating the size of an area people can occupy?
That was my next question. Because you'll see a big, like circle of beach chairs.
But at the end of the day, they take the towels off the beach or the city crews do. The tents. Hey, yeah, but it's, God forbid we mess up tradition where people can't put their towels out.
Right. Well, I've, I've heard people complain about people put their towels out and they're there all, you know, they go down there at six o'clock in the morning and they're not there until three o'clock in the afternoon and.
Do, do what they do in resorts. If you don't, if, if you put something out and you haven't sat there in an hour, two hours, their, their crews go and pull those towels off the chair, the lounge chairs.
I'd say an hour. If we're going to regulate, I'd say an hour.
It's, to me, it just, yeah.
Because seriously, yeah, our beaches are very, very small. So it's, I don't, I don't think a lot of other communities really have this kind of a problem. Well, obviously, they, if some of them do, it's annoying and all that stuff.
It's more with the.
Ours is more because they're so, so small.
But then you also have to realize, okay, the damage that the sun can do to people. People enjoy being out there and at the beach, but they don't want, they don't want to get skin cancer or whatever. So they're, so that protects them as well and they can still enjoy the beach.
Maybe we can look at the footage of how big the canopy is, just because they're just taking up too much space. It's already small as it is.
Those are about 10 by 10, aren't they?
An average one is 10 by 10.
Yeah.
Whereas I think, and you see some of these restrictions of maybe six, six feet, they're probably using a large umbrella to come up with a six foot, which seems to make sense, right? If you have a single post, beach umbrella in the ground. If you have a single post, beach umbrella in the ground, it's one post, you're going to have maybe two adults and a child, or that can fit under that as compared to an entire group of people and their equipment. So I think that's really what we were looking at, just from a size standpoint, the umbrella's made sense. As you get bigger than that, it doesn't. The other issue that we would like to put in there is that you can't leave it overnight. I know that we would be taking on cleaning the beach as a result of this and removing them, but I think, you know, we see this in peak summertime season where it's left all night.
And could we do up to an hour if it's not being used on the beach, we take it off?
That gets into a very difficult enforcement end of it. I mean, if you imagine what parking has to do with just parking enforcement and marking and hourly and coming back to see if somebody's in compliance, marking tires, I would, to do that, we would have to have somebody down there continuously saying, nobody's been on this area for an hour, two consecutive hours. I don't know that we would have code or anybody able to do that, monitor it for the whole time.
And I don't, I don't think that's bad right now. I don't think, I think it works pretty well.
No, I was down there a lot with my kids this summer, and it was pretty bad.
But at least.
The people that weren't sitting there at all?
At all. And we'd get there, you know, 10 a.m., they don't get down there till maybe 2, 3. By that time, we're gone.
Yeah.
You know, so it's like, we couldn't use the space, my kids couldn't use the space, these families couldn't use the space, so.
Is there some sort of camera technology with AI? You know, can we just put a camera on the beach and then AI would be able to monitor, you know, oh, this spot has been empty for a long time? Boing!
Is there, probably, but. How much does it cost? I don't know.
I don't know, Google it.
I would like to point out, we did receive one email late this afternoon about, somebody saying they recognize the issue, but they go to Step Beach and use a tent, but it's against the back wall of Step Beach, so it's not blocking anybody's view behind them. Nobody would be able to sit there. So that's why we, you know, it kind of fits in with the one issue that we threw out there, which is maybe some beaches, some areas it's okay, rather than a blanket prohibition, and others, you know, certainly not on Middle Beach, probably.
Step Beach makes sense, it's lower, and then you're not literally across all the restaurants and stores, so that makes sense.
There's nobody trying to look out.
That does, that does. Do you ever go, do you ever take your kids to South Beach?
No.
Why, just curiosity, why is Middle Beach?
Because we need to do the restoration project. There's too many rocks, too dangerous.
Oh, but maybe when that's done, that would, oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, it's much easier to get in for anybody's.
And they get to run into the water, out of the water, on their, I mean, on their own, but we're there.
Okay. Well, I don't have a problem with the six feet by six feet for whatever, but no, I would say no tents. I don't think the canopies or whatever should have sides on them, because the ones that are there typically don't have sides. I'm just throwing this out for further discussion. And maybe we don't, maybe we just, this year, just deal with Middle Beach, like the staff is recommending. And maybe something about the little baby things, whatever those are, whatever those sizes are, because I think you've probably seen those just then, yeah, correct? Yeah. What about setting up six-foot tables and setting up bars and all that?
Well, you're not allowed to drink down there anyways.
Really? I never knew that. Well, based on what happens down there, no. And I think everything is pretty much under control. If somebody got outrageous, law enforcement would come and take care of the problem, but.
But there is no drinking on the beach.
Okay, you can attest to that, there is none?
No, but there's.
There is, it's illegal to drink on the beach, but it is done. It is done.
Just like there's illegal to drink in public on the street.
Exactly. But I don't know, do we want to say something about table setups and things like that, unless they get some kind of a permit?
I'd say definitely no tables.
Unless it, like, there's a group in town that has a special event once a year on the beach. Well, they could go to the, you know, and it's done where the outdoor dining is done. So it's done in the evening time, just like the outdoor dining, but it's just locals. But some of the people are setting it up, and basically have jugs of, I've seen jugs of vodka and everything else set up, and do we want to throw tables in on the thing? I don't know, just a thought.
I say no tables.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't see the point of bringing a table to the beach.
I mean, we bring a little one like this to play cards on, you know?
Oh, well, yeah.
But when you have the fold-up six-foot, six, eight-foot tables.
But not like a Costco folding table like they use at the art festival and all that stuff, no. You don't need a six-foot long table.
Okay, so I don't know if we can add that to this.
Unless people want to use that for a shade.
But in reality, in the big world, people do not come to the beach with tables and chairs unless they rented the space, have the permit to use the beach.
Well, chairs, no. People go to the beach with sand chairs all the time.
But no, I'm just saying, you're having a function on the beach, shouldn't you be getting a permit to be having a function on the beach?
Yeah, probably shouldn't.
I mean, it is city property.
Yes.
Right. I'd be down with that. But yeah, I think little baby tents should be allowed. I'm thinking a canopy of sorts that is six-foot square, you know, because that's like the established umbrella footage, right?
Open on all sides?
Yeah, like a pop-up thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, yeah, I didn't even know they were putting tents down there that have the, wow, that's like a camping tent?
I don't, I think it's a regular beach tent too, but instead of stakes, you fill these bags up with sand that hold it in place.
Oh, wow. I didn't go to the beach much this year. I was really, I was busy this summer.
The average pop-up tent is 10 by 10.
Out of business? Making six-by-sixes? They gotta have six-by, well, if this other city has put it in their thing, they must know that they're available, right?
I think there would mostly be an umbrella, a six-foot wide round.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, umbrellas four to seven feet.
Okay. We're not going to be going out and measuring the umbrellas unless it looks like whatever.
There's a bunch. There's a bunch of canopies open six by six.
Okay, perfect.
Bed Bath &amp; Beyond or Walmart, people.
The one thing that I, if, because I have a feeling we're going to enact something, but I would like to see, because Love Catalina is so good about posting things, and, you know, months in advance, and the visitor's guide, how you have what you should bring, and, you know, you have that one little section. So we would want, want your cooperation on that. Probably we would want cooperation from the cross-channel carriers, so they can know, and however they would get the word out, because they probably have something, they have a list of things you can't bring. It's not to say people can't bring a 10 by 10, but you can't put it on our beaches, you know, some, we're going to have to kind of figure that out. But I really don't want poor code enforcement to have to take on a whole bunch more responsibility because they're already jammed. Scott, did you have anything to say?
Ken, again, it's really your beach, and as long as the regulations are reasonable and designed to promote enjoyment at the beach, they would be reasonable, so, and they'd be legal. So it's whatever you want to do, all the ordinances that you've looked at are valid. So we just need direction, and we can come back with options.
Okay. So, okay, we don't want to mess with Step Beach, correct? And we don't want to mess with South Beach, we just want to regulate Middle Beach at this point? Or, well, no, that would really be conflicting. Yeah, never mind.
There's also four-by-four canopies.
Okay.
Just so you know.
So, so would we say Middle Beach and South Beach? Both?
I say both.
Both? Both?
They're both on the same level, so, and they're both in the shops and the restaurants. The only difference is.
And it has the seating along the repentine wall.
Right, and we're going to fix that area. It'll be more popular again.
Would you have enough direction, you think?
I think so. So just let me confirm, we want to allow tents for children or infants, baby tents, six by, maximum of six by six. Prohibit them on Middle Beach and South Beach. No tables, and nothing left overnight.
Yes, yep. The only other thing is if you want to put in there that they shall not be unattended, so that that way gives us discretion to enforce it if people pop their stuff and then are gone the rest of the day. Yeah.
You can put it, it might be a little tough to do, but at least we can scare them a bit.
Yeah, I mean, again, the language just has to be that they cannot be unattended, and then we can use that with code to reasonably enforce that restriction.
Well, that may, would mainly be somebody snitching, calling, saying.
Well, but it could also be that, I mean, no, I mean, like, Public Works is out there, and it's in the morning, you know, they're doing their sweeps as we talk, and someone's got something set up, and two hours later, there's still no one there, that'd be a violation of the ordinance.
Annie, when we passed our no smoking on the beach ordinance, we never posted the ordinance on the beach. So people would say there's no smoking, and people would get mad because, no, there's nothing that says you can't smoke. So what we did is we posted no smoking, and it gives somebody at least the ability to say, you know, you can't put that tent there. Because now I have an ordinance behind me to say, you know, you can't do that. But yeah, was the same thing when we passed the no smoking on the beach, that people were saying, oh, I can, there's nothing that says, and it's like, no, you can't.
And we'll put up some signage as well. Do we?
But what about the unattended, the tents unattended? What about the blanket masks that's unattended for hours?
Well, that would be, I think that would be the same thing.
Just being unattended?
Just unattended.
Even if it's just.
Okay, so anything, you know, any, how would you say that, you know?
I mean, it would be, you know, establish or lay out personal belongings that remain there for pairs, blankets, tents, that remain unattended for, we'd have to set a period of time. I mean, you can certainly go in the water and enjoy it, but we'll come up with some language to address that.
Okay. So when you come back with this, then we can discuss it again and say, okay, I don't like this, tweak that, blah, blah, blah?
I mean, we'll come, we'll come and bring it back to you in a draft form. I mean, we have, we have time at this point.
Yeah, nice.
We do. Although it's supposed to be hotter in Hades again this week, so.
Yeah, it is.
But there was a lot of room on the beach today. There was a lot of room on the beach, and I didn't see any tents. Because a lot of those folks have already gone home, those folks, and now we're, now we're, just a lot of locals are trying to get on that beach, so, okay. But Val, what do you think? You going to shake your head one way or the other?
The tents there were this morning a child's tent.
A child's tent? Yeah. But that, but that will be okay under this ordinance. Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you, Scott.
Last item is item six on the agenda, sidewalk vending. This is a issue that on September 3rd, we were before you. At that time, staff was directed to address the feasibility of expanding the scope of sidewalk vending programs outlined in the Apple Code. And Dave Hart and Chief both have spent some time going out there and looking, and I'll turn it over to Dave Hart.
So the sidewalk vending ordinance update. Chief and I did, we walked all of Front Street, all the way out to the mall to find sites that might be within the limits, but still kind of be on Front Street. And so our direction was to evaluate the possibility of expanding street vending on Crescent Avenue, following the guidelines of the ordinance. Also protect the public's use and enjoyment of natural resource and recreational opportunities, regulations directly related to objective public health, safety, and welfare concerns. And from walking through, as you can see, Front Street can be kind of busy in the summer. But walking through areas that we did see, sites that we see, is where the vacant paddleboard stand is right now, has been removed, and also adjacent to the photo booth. So that's the sites from up above, otherwise known as the elbow. And then these are closer view where the vacant paddleboard stand is. You can see it's set back a little bit, which gives plenty of space for the four-by-eight carts, as well as to give space for those to walk through. Same with the adjacent to the photo booth there. We believe those, those two spots, you could vend without creating much congestion, but still giving you a prime spot on or near Front Street.
That one space, that first one, the paddleboard stand, that seems very big, and people can still sit on the benches and still do all of that, and.
And this is also, we need to, important note, is that long-term viability of these locations might be interrupted based on the further enhancement of that elbow area. So, but currently, those were the places we filled.
That's what I'm looking at, this number two spot, adjacent to the photo booth. Bob, didn't you designate that as if the elbow, when we do the elbow, so that it's permanent, weren't we going to go right through that area for that sidewalk? So that's, I mean, so I guess we could designate it until that happens.
It would be close to that. There would still be room. I mean, you can see it's, it'll be, it would be off to the right of that, that picture with the photo booth, as far as where you'd be going through. The crosswalk could potentially be going through. So, yeah, we think that those spots.
Well, the first view looks great, and that might actually keep people on that side of the street, instead of, you know, crossing over.
And you got them coming and going.
Right next to ATM machine.
Yeah.
Right. Well, we appreciate the effort you put into this. I know it's, you know, you've been walking the streets a lot lately. Is there any comments from here, or anybody from the audience want to speak on this issue?
Mayor, council, how are you guys? I had sent you guys a presentation with 12 different locations that I went and walked as well. And I also added like an approximate area where a vending cart might see, just so you can visually kind of get a better idea of what you're looking at. Also, it was broken down mostly into three sections. The first section went over the importance of sidewalk vending, kind of gave the economic benefits of sidewalk vendors, the pros and cons. Then it talked about community engagement and how it would enhance community engagement.
I'm sorry, Danny, could you speak up a little? Could you go into the mic a little more?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm a short guy, I got to lean in. Regarding enhancing community engagement, there was three points there, fostering local connections, encouraging participation, and promoting inclusivity. There's another section about supporting local entrepreneurs, empowering business, local businesses, job creation opportunities, encouraging entrepreneurship, promoting cultural diversity. Section two is just kind of an overview of SB 946. It breaks down the key provisions, what kind of, what determines an objective health and safety concern, what regulatory powers local authorities can put over street vendors, criteria for objective health, safety concerns. And section three is the 12 locations that I proposed to you guys. I'll give you my criteria for selecting the locations. Locations must adhere to safety regulations, including adequate spacing from intersection and public facilities to ensure the safety of both vendors and customers while complying with local health and safety standards. So location one is in the park, which is across from Wet Spot. Location two is right next to that, where VFW Park is. Location three is an area at Old Ben Park, right next to the basketball courts. And when I gave these to you, I tried to do three different perspectives, just so you guys can see, coming from the left-hand side, coming from the right-hand side, looking at it dead-on, just to kind of give you guys the best visual for that. Location four is the second spot at Old Ben Park. Location five's actually the photo booth, so that's great. Location six is the, where the old stand-up paddleboards were. I referred to it here as Pancake Cottage. There's an area a little further down from that, by the steamer trunk, that a vending cart can operate without obstructing, kind of exactly the same as the first one. that a vending cart can operate without obstructing, kind of exactly the same as the first one. There's a spot in front of the Pavilion Hotel. That's what is used during the Beach Bingos. That's where vendors set up for Beach Bingos and Movies on a Beach. I also included a fire truck in that, so you can kind of see where the fire truck sits and how there's no way it's impeding any kind of traffic. Nine would be next to the stage. Ten was by the old taxi stand. Eleven is Middle Beach, kind of same as Pavilion, just in front of El Galian. And twelve is right at the base of the pier. I put a conclusion, that in, the introduction of designated sidewalk vending spots along Crescent Avenue will enhance local economic growth, foster community engagement, and promote cultural diversity, ultimately creating a vibrant urban environment that supports both vendors and residents. Approving the proposed sidewalk vendor loca, spots will stimulate local economic growth by creating new job opportunities, support small business, and ultimately enhance the vibrance and attractiveness of the community. By choosing locations that do not obstruct pedestrian traffic or violate city ordinance, we can ensure a harmonious integration of street vendings into our unique landscape. So I'm asking that Mayor and Council just look at the 12 spots that I proposed to you guys and just get with Dave and the Fire Chief and determine the viability of those spots as well. And before, the justification I got was quite, I don't want to say arbitrary, it was quite vague. I would appreciate the justification to include like specific measurements saying, you know, an eight-foot cart here would only leave 25 foot for egress. That would be a more appropriate justification.
How big are your rectangles that you have on the thing?
Rectangles?
Yeah, you know, you put the rectangle, the space of the cart, designating the cart. How, what, what size did you base that on?
That is just a visual, that is, I did that, that's a visual estimation.
So you didn't use any kind of, you know, represents, you know, four by six or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
But that's why I tried to give the three angles, so you can kind of see where that would sit approximately.
Right, well, some of these just look kind of, you'd have to have a pretty small cart.
Yeah, I guess that, that's kind of my question too, I'm sorry. So, that space doesn't represent the actual size of your-
Uh, no, it is not an exact representation.
So it could be bigger than that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm guessing, thinking about his cart, I'm guessing it's a lot bigger than any of these rectangles.
Daniel, my issue is with one, two, three, and four, in that the way these are shown, that the space would actually be on the lawns, the fake lawns?
Yeah.
And that, to me, that's taking away public access for somebody who wants to use that space.
No, I, I do, I do understand.
I would, that I would never-
I, I understand. So, street vendors, a big spot that, so, street vendors are so harshly regulated that one of the only spots that they're allowed to set up is city parks. So that's why I included those city parks in there, because that is one of the only spots that-
Okay, but then you have to take into account our location, what we are. These city parks are small. City parks on the mainland are going to be bigger.
I, I realize that, yes.
So, that's why, I, I understand what you're saying on city parks, but just like beach towels and tents, you know, we don't have that space, so.
But I agree with those locations though too, because I walk a lot, and, you know, so I walk at various times. And just going, going down Front Street and then taking a left, you know, like going out to the mall and all that kind of stuff. Sometimes, you know, I'm like jostling just to get through. And there's people in Old Ben utilizing that space and sitting all around on those benches, and there's people everywhere. That's just a super, super busy area, especially on a cruise ship day. Just the people coming off the ship and walking around, you know, they, they walk, you know, eight, 10 abreast.
My idea behind that too is there was, sometimes the cruise ship, there is a substantial line out there, all the way down past the basketball court sometimes. And they're sitting out in the hot sun for hours without any kind of refreshment. So I think that was the idea about setting one of those spots.
Right, so that would be a small-
Service those, yeah, yes. Instead of, he said, she said, we could always just measure the locations to see if it's feasible. Because I, again, I, I see what you're saying about the, how that rectangle is not an accurate representation. But if we could go and measure those locations, then we'd have more information to kind of make a better determination.
And then my, my other question is, what's the difference between six and seven?
Six and seven, sorry.
It's ATM and then steamer trunk, so just-
Which are actually the two locations that we're proposing.
Pancake Cottage, all of those are the good ones. Five and six are the ones we're suggesting.
Seven is actually a little further down, kind of more across from the steamer trunk.
I see, yeah. Well, and again, depending on the size of it, blocks people having to go around to-
So did you like the spots that Dave pointed out?
What was that?
Did you like the spots that Dave Hart-
Oh yeah, those were two of the ones on my list.
Right, so.
Yes.
So I'm not happy with one to four, and I think we have some concurrence on that, but-
I mean, I think six and seven, I mean, I would say six, if anything, not seven, but that wouldn't be up to me unless we open it up to him. But six is right there in the middle of going to Front Street and the mall, so it's perfect. And like I mentioned, right next to the ATM.
Right. Eight I'm not happy with because it's in front of that bench, that planter that has the seating all around it, so that, that would cut off seating.
And it's also on the walkway, it would-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I included that one because that's where during the Beach Bingo and Movie on a Beach, there's a vendor that operates down there. So that's one of the areas that a vendor normally operates.
Well, and those are special things that the city puts on, so that's cool. You know, Beach Bingo night or, or Movies on the Beach or whatever, then that can be negotiated with, with Dave, I would think.
Yeah, but I think where I was coming with that is, it has to have an objective health and safety concern. And if it's allowed in one instance, use of public space is allowed in one instance, it should be allowed in the other instances as well. I think that's where I was coming from with that.
I think that though, because the event is in the evening, there's less foot traffic than if you're there during the day when it's jam-packed.
Well, maybe, maybe if we put a stipulation saying vendors can only operate at that area from 5:00 PM to-
Okay, see what you're saying.
Or the other option is it's not used at all, and I don't think we want that to happen. And next to the stage, no, not with that box there, and I, I understand. And I know people that, well, this one guy eats his lunch right there every day, close to his stage. Every day he's at work, and I see a lot of, I don't know about that box thing and what that's all about, but access to that if they needed to get in it.
So there is actually plenty of room right there for a vendor to operate and still have 10 feet of space access to that box. Again, if we measured everything, I think we wouldn't be, we would have more information. Santi during the art festival actually had a 10 by 10 canopy there, and his smoker there. He was tucked back in the corner, didn't, nobody even noticed he was there. He didn't impede any kind of traffic whatsoever. He actually, I think he approved the flow of traffic because people were able to get into his business, get their food, and get out.
I feel like if we measured that, I'd feel more comfortable with it, but I would need it measured for sure.
And then you went a lot, to a lot of work just to do this, Daniel, so I can appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you.
But the foot of the pier, I don't like that idea at all.
No, and I don't like eleven, I-
Any time of the year, it's just-
Yeah, I think during the day for the beach entrances, I don't feel so comfortable.
But I don't see, I don't have, well, again, we'd have to measure, but I don't see a problem with location 10, the old taxi stand.
Yeah, I think nine and 10, if we measured, I'd feel better about it.
Again, but that's not a park.
Does that have to be a park?
No.
No, but you were talking about them being in parks and permitted in parks, so.
That's why we didn't want them there, because there's very, it's too small.
Because that wears the park is. Yeah.
And I also don't like the one in front of, I don't like eleven, the one in front of that planter. People sit on that planter a lot.
Well, it's the same as number nine.
Oh, it is?
I mean, it's directly in front of the plant, or I'm sorry, not nine, number eight.
Number eight, yeah.
Yeah, essentially, it's the same as the Pavilion location, just in front of, takes up the same-
But that just feels like encroachment. I mean, it feels like, you know, and those are, those are really nice places for people to sit, so.
Well, there's a prohibition currently in the code that you can't set these in front of benches, public benches, currently.
Oh, well, good, okay, then eight's out, and so is eleven.
Yeah.
I feel com, well, I would like to measure number five, seven, nine, 10, but I would be a yes to number six.
Well, five was already measured because that was one of the approved locations by Chief and Dave Hart.
Okay.
Five and six is good.
And same with number-
You said five is measured?
Five and six both are spaces that work, size and every, you know, factoring in the other areas, keep in mind that it's, in addition to space, it's health, safety, and welfare. And part of our welfare position is, you know, blocking, maintaining views to both the public facilities and the beach. So, you know, those are those other factors that come into play. It's not simply size.
I am-
Right, so that, that was in the back of my brain too, when I was looking at the one by the old taxi stand. I'm like, well, how about Cantina Charlie's and, you know, looking through the, I don't know.
So I, I understand what Dave was saying about the welfare aspect of it. But my cart just has a simple umbrella on it. It wouldn't be out of place with all the other umbrellas on the beach. And I believe the term welfare is not to mean like the visual aesthetics. I mean, I think that's meant to more like, like people's flow throughout town. I don't think that's meant to mean like the visual scenery aesthetics of it.
I, we disagree with that. Welfare is not defined in the state legislation, and welfare has been used by many, many cities on many, on these regulations and others as it's broader than just health and, health and safety.
No, I don't.
It's, it's too narrowly defined to say welfare has to be tied to just health and safety, because that would make the word welfare superfluous. It's there for a reason.
Yes, and I, I get the point that you're coming across. You're trying to use the term welfare to mean the visual aesthetics and keeping people come here for a certain visual aesthetic. And so having a vending cart there would take away from that. And I disagree with you there. I don't think it would take away from that. I think it would bring to that. And so that, I think, is where we're on the fence. That's where we're getting, that's where we're butting heads. Because I'm, I'm pretty sure state SB 946 was kind of passed to limit, you know, certain instances where local authorities were maybe imposing restrictions that were a little more, you know, making it a little more difficult than they should be, a little too burdensome for the vendor. So I believe that's the reason why state legislation got passed in the first place.
Fire Chief is right behind you.
Yes.
For everyone to make a comment. Thank you, Daniel.
So I think I heard you say the ones in front of like the Pavilion, the base of the pier, and Middle Beach, and the taxi stand, those are all kind of like staging areas. We don't just have one fire engine that goes. We have, we have a patrol, we have an ambulance, we have the paramedic squad, and then we have possibly two county fire vehicles, and then myself, if it's a call that I need to go on. So we're, those areas are kind, someone could be at Pebley, someone could be at the casino. We come in like this. Those are our areas to get out of the way. Also for staging fire apparatus, we don't just go park right in front. We park kind of cockeyed on the side so the, we could see that, we have a better view. We don't just park directly in front of the door and go. It doesn't work that way. We have the ladder truck. I need all the room I could get down there in those areas to be able to operate the aerial and have the proper angle to put up all our ladders. So we park, we park far enough away. Those are our, kind of our outs to get by.
Yeah, you were just down there by the Blue Water a couple days ago, right? There were a bunch of vehicles and, and you were there by the old taxi stand too, right? Yeah, shoot, I forgot about that.
I had a call there with two vehicles there, and then the whole thing was blocked after that.
Right, okay, and is there something in the ordinance?
What was one of the last discussions about trying to get, getting your cart to a location? Right, because some of these carts, they can just push, but, but I think some of them have to be towed, right? With a golf cart or something, and that was the other thing we didn't want, maybe was the towing of these things on a-
Well, that's the other part of when you open up Front Street to it. Then you have vehicles driving on Front Street to deliver the cart, the vending cart, to Front Street. Right now, in the locations that it's allowed, the, the cart, the golf cart that's towing it goes down an area that's currently open for deliveries on the side of both Sumner and Catalina. So it goes there, drops the, drops the cart off, and then goes back.
So if there was an incident, let's say the one in front of the Blue Water, where all these vehicles showed up, and all of a sudden, oh my God, we gotta get the cart out of the way. How do you get the cart out of the way? You have, somebody would have to run, get their golf cart.
So my, I, I'm the only vendor operating at this point.
Right.
And so what I do, my cart rolls on four wheels. It's casting wheels. I can push it with one hand out of the way. So there is commercial parking that goes almost all the way to the Marlin Club and almost all the way to Leo's. I back it up to that point, unhook it from my golf cart, push it the rest of the way. So it's not, it's not a very difficult issue. And then as far as the staging of the fire trucks, I totally get that, I understand that. I just don't see what the difference is for a cart parked on Sumner or, you know, Catalina Street not being in the way. But now all of a sudden, if they're parked over here, they're in the way of a staging area that could potentially be used for a staging area. It's, the cart moves very easily and can move in any scenario. And I, I think it's a far stretch to say, you know, in one instance it's okay, but on the other instance, it's not okay.
So where's your dream location?
What was that?
Where is your dream location?
I think next to the stage is pretty good, so that would not impact any kind of flow because so, street vendor setup here, the stage sticks out probably 15 extra feet more than a street vendor would. So it could not affect the flow from the left side, and it could not affect the flow from the right side. As for emergency vehicles, there's really no reason for an emergency vehicle to be behind the fountain right there or drive that way, like there was, I feel like that is a, a good spot, and there's-
So you're talking where the smokehouse was?
Exactly.
And that's way more desirable than Sumner?
What do you mean, like where we-
For you, I mean, in, in your, in your mind, you think you, you would get way more business back there than being where you are on, on Sumner?
People actually just walk that Front Street, and a lot of times they don't even look up. So that's why I had music going on my cart, to kind of get people to look my direction, to go that way. And then the city said the music wasn't very, wasn't acceptable, so I got rid of any music. So, yes, I do believe being on Crescent Avenue would increase my sales potentially three, three times what they are now. And again, we're coming, we're coming into the winter months. I'm not sure if I'm gonna even be able to have a viable business in the locations that's provided.
Including the two that were proposed by Mr. Hart?
No, not, not including the two additional ones. I think those would be very big and beneficial to have those as well. Because like I said, the people standing in line, I see these poor people standing in line for the cruise ship for like three, three hours. You see the same person only move so far down the road. Like, there's real no place for him to get water, drinks, snacks, stuff like that. And so that was the idea of having some locations on that side of town, was to kind of cater to-
So I would just suggest to Council, I mean, the, the two that were presented by Dave Hart and Chief were matched up identical, the two of the 12 that were presented by Daniel. Maybe we, if it's Council's decision to allow those two spots and move forward with those two. I mean, we're, I don't know if the intent was to increase it to 12 additional spots than what's already there, but this would be two additional spots where exactly, or what Daniel felt's two of the 12 he-
Right, well, I, I'm, I'm happy to authorize those two spots.
So, one of the thing is the current spots, a lot of the current spots that are already, like, street vending locations, aren't- already, uh, like street vending locations, aren't even, you can't even operate there. So one of them's across from the Cafe Metropole on the sidewalk, but you can obstruct the sidewalk in any way. So that spot's immediately out. Uh, there's two spots up by the horse stables, which just probably isn't a very good business move to be selling, like, I'm not a lemonade stand, I, like...
I would reconsider that one, those kids get hungry.
So, those, those spots are kind of out.
By the school, and then when the horses come back?
L- Lover's Cove would kind of really only be lucrative certain parts of the season for, you know, a couple certain weekends, and then that's done. So a lot of the spots, if we got rid of some spots and added other ones, I wouldn't be opposed to that either, because a lot of the spots aren't even real, really, you know, viable locations for a business to operate.
You can't, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna eliminate spots because they're not economically viable. That's not a consideration that we're supposed to take into effect.
No, no, I didn't, I didn't mean it like that, but you, you get what I'm saying is, you don't want to open more than 12 spots. Well, four of the 12 spots aren't even great spots, so if we, you know, had a cap on the number of spots, uh, then I would want to, you know, disqualify some spots and add new spots, if that makes sense, so...
I, I, I would just remind the council and, 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 and Daniel that these are mobile carts, and so the number of spots means that you can move from one location to another throughout the day as activities occur, as areas become more, um, used. Not, it's not, you're not required to sit at one spot all day long and wait for people to come. You can move around these carts, which is exactly why they're sidewalk carts, to move around.
Right.
I'm, I'm curious, Dave, um, since we've started these discussions, has there been, um, an increased number of inquiries from vendors?
I was just gonna ask that question too.
Have we had any new applications, or we still have the, the same list we're working on?
We, we do. We do have some more people who are, who are interested, not, we don't have any more applications, but we have people on the waiting list to fill in, um, a couple spots that, um, permits that, that are being...
Do we have anybody who's planning on coming online?
Yes, we do.
How many?
We absolutely do. We have one that's come, that will be coming on, coming online within the next two weeks. Um, and then we, I just gave, sent out, um, two permits, pulling two permits for, because the lack of use, and so to give opportunity to other, to other, um, vendors. They're waiting to also hear after this, what, what you have decided, to decide on their carts, so...
Okay, so there's four.
Uh, that were already on the waiting list, right? Those aren't...
Right, but I mean total. So we've got Daniel, we've got the one that's coming on in two weeks, and then these other two people, so that's four.
Correct.
So I don't think we need 12 spots to identify, but...
All right, yeah.
We actually, we actually have six, um, permits. So we have, so currently we have, uh, um, four that are, that are fully permitted. I have one that's coming on, and then I have one that, um, opened up to give to another vendor. I'm waiting on two people that I am looking to pull the permits on. They've gotten their notices, um, and I'm giving them time to respond and to maybe get their carts going, and if not, I will, I will be opening up to two more vendors. So those, so I have some vendors who are waiting. I have one that's almost has her cart done, and one that's waiting for, um...
And this is a, a hodgepodge of, of different kinds of carts, or are they all food?
No, they're all hodgepodge.
Okay, cool.
Are they all, how many of them are like food products, where they're pre, pre-wrapped or whatever, versus...
Currently, uh, currently, um, Daniel's the only one that's doing pre-wrapped food. Everybody else was to be, um, merchandise vendors. So either they're selling shirts, or they're selling, um, shoes, or just different, um, jewelry.
Yeah.
The one who's coming on board is customized clothing.
Okay.
The other person is trying to do a food cart. So she just wants to, she's waiting to hear back about tonight, to see what, what is she's looking to do with that.
Do we have design standards for these things?
Sizes, I think, size and...
Just sizes.
Just sizes, okay. Um, like, you know, are they signage? Are they allowed to get, like, my least favorite signage that I really don't like to see in this town are those big kind of, "wah" curve-over flag things, like, the people, the parasail people on Crescent have one, and...
The sign ordinance would still apply.
But those are in front of their shops. There's one at the top side, and there's one over there, so are those allowed?
Uh, they have both been notified.
Okay, good.
Removed their signage.
Oh, perfect, yeah. Well, I noticed the one on Crescent removed one, or it broke.
We have a couple on the pier too, we're working on.
Yeah, yeah, that just screams to me, just, you know, like, you might as well have those blowy things, you know? Uh, okay, um, well, I don't know, I don't know about the rest of you guys, but I'm okay with the two locations that Dave and, and Chief presented.
Me too.
And are we gonna, are we gonna have, are we gonna measure any of the other spots that came up in Daniel's proposal?
Well, I, I think both the Chief and, and Dave Hart's position was they, they walked from the mall to, uh, the casino. They walked that entire area. While there's spots, and I, I think some of Daniel's spots that he designated, the size isn't the issue. I think, I think four by eight could fit in some of those spots, but they walked that and they determined that these locations would fit and meet all the requirements and the criteria of the city, so... And, and, you know, they matched two of Daniel's, so that's a good sign, at least, they're on the same page with those two.
And let, and let me ask you again about the hours up, because remember the hot dog guy? He wasn't doing so good during the day, but when he, when he started at night, he was, he was making bank, so...
We actually did change the ordinance on that, and, uh, it is from 8:00 AM till 2:00 AM. So they can actually vend all the way till 2:00 AM.
Cause that's when the food is really handy, and all that stuff.
Why would that be?
Because I've been walking down Front Street smoking dope.
Um, so there was, uh, a couple other things I just wanted to bring to your guys' attention to address. We had discussed previously possibly bringing the cap of number of vendors up to kind of free up the waitlist a little bit. So right now, we're at three food and three merchandise vendors, and again, I'm the only one that's out there operating regularly. So we were discussing possibly making it four or five food and four or five, um, merchandise vendors. So that was one other thing I wanted to see if we can discuss, and as well as streamlining the, uh, permit process, cause Dave, Dave's doing a great job over there, but he's one guy, so, and he's working off a pen and paper. If we can kind of come up with some kind of system where maybe vendors can check the city website, see where they are on the list, come with, with like, set dates where, okay, if you don't respond in two weeks, it goes to the next person. Cause right now, it's just kind of like back and forth, and I, I appreciate what Dave's doing. He's like, trying to give everybody a chance, so I'm definitely not like, I'm definitely not putting that down in any way. I just, if there was like some policies and procedures in place where, hey, it comes two weeks, I haven't heard a response, it goes to the next person. And that might, uh, like, free up the list and kind of, cause like I said, it was two and a half years, two and a half frustrating years for me to get my permit, so I just didn't want that to happen to somebody else.
Right, right.
And I just want to clarify, it wasn't two and a half years of the permitting process. He was, Daniel was on a waiting list, waiting for permits to open up. He wasn't waiting to hear back from us on whether his permit was approved or not.
No, um, and I was calling every day, kind of shaking the trees, so I definitely was, uh, being the, uh, the greasy, the, what is it, the squeaky wheel, so I definitely was, but I think if the permit process, the street vending program as a whole was, you know, revamped a little bit to streamline the permit process, then I wouldn't have had to wait two years, then it would have, you know, cause I was kind of just waiting on Dan Hunky to whenever he felt like, you know, letting me know where I was on the list.
Well, I don't, at this point, Daniel, personally, I don't think there's any reason to increase the numbers, because we're hardly getting them at all, and the food vendors is really the tough one unless they have a commissary. And nobody has been able to make that work, other than when, what's his name, had JMF, uh, so then he was able to do that. So, um, I don't think there's a need to increase the number at this point. I mean, if you, you know, if they start flocking in, then of course, then we could look at that.
I do like the idea, though, of giving somebody two weeks to respond, or a certain amount of time so we can move forward with the next person.
And I understand, like, health department does take a while, so that would definitely have to be like a amount of time that, like, we determine, because it would be unfair if health department takes a month, give the people two weeks to figure it out. So we'd have to definitely sit down and determine that, but, uh, I think the reasoning behind have increasing more vendors, is the last time we spoke, we had kind of talked about it, and like, so Santi's been waiting on the list for quite some time, and I was just trying to open up that waitlist, because I don't really think that there should be anybody sitting on a waitlist if I'm the only vendor out there ever operating at one point. So it's kind of like the other people are either just standing around waiting, or waiting to hear back from Dave, or waiting to hear back from the health department, so if we can kind of just fix that, then it would save a lot of, uh, you know, people standing around waiting for stuff.
It's, it sounds to me like they're working on it. You know, Dave Hart just already, you know, he's rescinding them and stuff, so, you know, you, you lit the fire, so it's, it's on its way.
Perfect.
So...
So do we just provide, we're providing direction on...
Yeah, that's all we're doing. And you've got direction?
Six and seven?
I believe that the two spots that we, that, there's agreement.
Five and six, no?
Yeah, five and six.
Yeah, just, just as a follow-up, I'll have to look, the ordinance references a map, and so we'll have to look to see if the map was adopted at the same time as the ordinance. If so, we'd have to bring that map back for adoption via the council.
Of course, we do.
And if it was just something to, for, uh, the city manager's discretion in that map, then we can make these available immediately.
And at this point, let's, the other comment that Yessenya made, do we, do we even want to move forward with any of the measuring those other locations, or do we just want to go with these two and...
Let's go with these two to start.
Okay.
The only one I would want to entertain, if we can go back and measure, would be nine.
Nine was which one?
At the point of being, you know, he's behind the, the fountain. So it's not in the way.
Oh, where the smokehouse set up.
I mean, I know that it's behind, but that's up to the business to want to be there or not, but if it's not in the way of anything, then...
Except the benches, except the benches where people sit.
Um, well, it's to the side, isn't it? Because you're in front of that little door.
Well, we need to be able to have access to the little box.
Come out more. Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
So my husband came in and saw, um, Matt. Matt, are you okay back there? He's, my husband snuck in.
Doing well. One of the challenges back there is I don't hear what the audience, uh, hears on the TV, so, uh, made some adjustments. We're, we're still tweaking the system, but, uh...
Awesome.
Progress.
Oh, good, thank you so much. I know you all, you and Jamie, these poor guys, you know, they didn't get their degrees in IT and audio engineering, and we're throwing them in, into that, so they're doing a really good job.
It's funny, I don't know if it's because you're sitting in the middle, but I hear massive echo feedback, um, when you speak, um, but I don't when you guys do. I mean, it just echoes.
But we're missing the body, so it...
Oh, that could be, but I was just thinking, cause she was in the middle and it was like